Okay. Now that you guys have gotten back into your conversations, we'll call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the, it is six o'clock on the dot. We'll start with the consent agenda. Are there any items that we need to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
I didn't see anything that I directed to.
No?
No.
Yes, correct. All right. So is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
A motion that we adopt the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We'll call trustee Alexander. I'm trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
All right. Items are adopted. All right, we'll move on now to administrative highlights. I asked Tori to present about a collaboration we have with Ozark Mills. So all this left, we can get away.
Hi, guys. Most of you know me from taking your forms, but tonight I get to talk about something way more fun than that. Tonight, I'm going to talk about an ongoing collaboration we've had with Finley Farms at the mill in Finley Farms in Ozark. Hopefully, most of you have been there since they've opened that property. This collaboration has been going on for about five years, so I'm just going to dig into the latest chapter. Back at the end of last year, the books at the mill realized that we were coming upon in 2023 the 100th year anniversary of the opening of Riverside Inn. So they gave me a call and said, "Can you come and try to help us figure out what we could do to honor Howard Garrison?" Because, as you may know, the bottom floor of their property, they have a speakeasy kind of bar/restaurant that they had named after Howard Garrison, who was the proprietor, founder of the mill. So this was their little invitation. I called up our friends at the Christian County Historical Society, and we all had a series of meetings all throughout the spring to plan this event. It was supposed to be in May, and then there was a big flood, as some of you may remember, and they had to close down the garrison and there were a bunch of damage. And so in the original version of things, the library was going to have a series of programs during parties at Riverside Inn. They used to have card games and dance contests. So we were going to offer dancing lessons and teach people how to play bridge. But because it was at the very last minute, rescheduled in September once they opened, we didn't get to do that this year. But the hope is that this will be an annual event to honor Howard, and that will continue to be a part of it. What they did offer to do without us pushing too hard was to make it in part a fundraiser for the library and for the history museum. So the history museum memberships run at $15 a year, and so everybody who bought a ticket got a free membership, I mean, free built into their ticket, membership to the history museum, which more than quadruple, I don't know how many times the size of their board. They had a pretty small board. There were 150 people invited to the event. So it was a great, a great thing for them. And then they had a live painter there doing a painting that was auctioned off to benefit the library. So we don't have the exact amount that we made from that, but that'll be in future board reports. So I'm really hoping that this will be an annual fundraiser, that the library gets to do with them. And it was really fun to kind of think through Howard and his life. So part of the reason they called us is not just because we've been kind of their informer on accurate and authentic history materials as they've gone through the process of building the mill property, but also because Howard was a, not just a local business owner, but an artist and a lifelong library supporter. So he donated the property that the Ozark Community Branch sits on. So the original kind of branch after they moved off the square was donated by him in the late '60s. And then by 1972, that branch had been there. He was actually a trustee for 11 years. He passed in 1974. So again, the library, we just celebrated our anniversary, opened in 1956. So he wasn't in the first cohort, but in the first few cohorts. So he was a big supporter of the library and really wanted it to grow within our county. When he passed away, actually, and he asked that all donations and luau flowers be given to the library. So he was sort of one of our first legacy donors. I love to point that out to people as the local in-house fundraiser who want to give us money. That Howard was a big supporter and left us money in his will. This is a painting that he did. Some of you may or may not know, if you haven't been to the mill's garrison property, that in addition to running Riverside Inn, he was a pretty celebrated local artist. This is a painting of our first librarian, Lucille, that he did. She was the librarian, actually, of the Christian County Reading Center before the library itself opened downtown. And she continued as our first official librarian from 1956 till 1974. He did give this to her, and she needed it. She hid it in the ceiling tiles of the Anderson History Room for quite some time, until he came looking for it and wondered why she didn't have it hung up. And then the story is he asked for it back. So actually, if anybody knows who owns this painting, we would love to talk to them about this painting and see if they might be willing to redonate it back to the library since it was a big part of our history. She just thought she didn't, she wasn't flattering. She caught it. And she was not afraid to tell people what she caught. So since we have some new board members and just since we've had more community involvement, I've talked about this partnership a lot over the last five years. But the mill came to the library when they very first purchased, well, actually, when Megan Stack, then Megan Morris, had taken over the kind of visioning of what they wanted to do inside that property. She has a passion for history. This is Johnny's daughter, who is really the lead behind that whole project. And she really wanted to make sure that a lot of detail was, a lot of attention was given to putting accurate and authentic materials into whatever they ended up theming the project. So one of the things the library has done, and we've done many to make this project a reality in helping them out, is that we had a number of Howard Garrison paintings he donated to the library before he passed. And they ended up putting four of those down in the garrison since he painted them. If you have ever been to the garrison, you walk through one of the molasses containers. And this first item here is one of the library's paintings. This is a painting that Howard did when he was in jail for bootlegging. And it's covered in the local papers that some friends brought him some art supplies. And he painted, he painted his view from the jail cell. So this is one of his paintings. In exchange for letting us loan them the paintings, the Morris family paid for professional appraisals at their own cost of the paintings, which we'd never had done before. That was multiple thousands of dollars that we did not have in the budget and could not afford on our own. So this is one of them that's there. Why is this on top? It appears to be yours. So... Let me see if I go closer. It might not seem to be moving, but it doesn't work. I was so excited about how well he did this time. He texted us. Last time. Last time we had a problem?
You might have to close the browser. We're starting. Looks like it crashed.
Hold on. Here we go. Something's happening. Okay. We're back. All right, sorry. Look at these lovely paintings. They're next. One of the things we did get them to agree to do, since they are on loan, is to put... So on the computer, it's working. But here, it's not. Sorry, guys.
I was just going to say.
Please. These beautiful paintings. It is working here, but the board...
Bald Knobbers and Bald Knobber Mask.
So... Maybe we might have to actually fix this for other. We're needing things to do real quick. I do have a backup, but it will take a second. Pick this up. So I had keys.
Yeah, you never know what he's got.
He's got change before me on the television.
Can't that hand be tied up? Without a control?
All right. Nothing else? Nothing else? I swear, we really don't usually have those many. Is this one here? This will probably require a deck TV. Read it here. All right. Let's see my goodness. This is, I am not the IT person. I didn't get a grant for this TV, which is helpful, but... And now let's see.
To magic, turn it off and turn it back on.
Thank you.
I don't know what this is. I do not endorse this program.
Twenty one drops straight. I'm twenty one cups.
He's so sweet. Jacking?
Your original point.
Changing. There's a lot of drop.
Here we are.
All right. Yay. Now hopefully, my mouse will still work remotely. Make the paper down. This is coming down. All right. See?
Yay.
There you are. A couple of shades.
Yay.
The result of the Christmas on Ava. And it was quite a feat as a commercial enterprise to get those who agreed to put the library's name anywhere, honestly. But they did agree to put these little plaques. And part of that was because, since we're giving them the paintings for free outside of the cost of the appraisal, we wanted to make sure that people knew, and they were on board with having people know that the content for the history parts of their property, if people wanted more information, we wanted them to just walk right across the street to the library. So I do feel like we succeeded in that, and we're really proud that we made that happen. We also got the museum involved, and they were able to lend a couple paintings with the same stipulation. So there's a few from the history museum so that people know they can go see parts of what Howard donated there. These are two of our most valuable paintings and the most valuable paintings that we know that Howard did. This is one called "The Bald Knobber's Mask" and "The Bald Knobber's Scene." This is supposedly a scene of the Bald Knobbers plotting right before they did their infamous murder in this cabin here. This is a picture of his great step-grandmother. Actually, there's a photograph that we found in our collection that this was taken from, that he painted. So if anybody ever wants to see it, it's very similar to this. Martha Garrison. So these are the paintings we loaned. In case you have... How many people have been? Have you guys been to the mill? So on the first floor of the mill, where they have the regular restaurant and the little mercantile store, every frame, pretty much every framed, blown-up, old-timey photograph is from the library, from the Bruce Pegrip collection. That happens to be my father. He was a, his local history collector. We have over 1,000 images from him that he donated to the public domain. And we pitched those to Finley Farms because we know the ownership of them, so there were no copyright issues. So they use them widely. That was before we required they put a little label under each one. So instead, if you do go there in the gift shop, you will see a postcard book of all of those. And you'll see right here, it says, "Thank you to the Bruce Pegrip Collection at Christian County Library." After this, that happened first, and that's when we were like, "Oh, if you're going to have our paintings, great, but how about you put it right under the painting saying that it comes from us?" So they were happy to do that. They have opened the mill tour now, so this is another long part of what we helped them do. This process took almost three years. They have these kind of museum education windows downstairs that you can click on those things and learn more about different parts of the building of the mill, different people who've owned the mill, different creators. Howard is one of the people. And they hired an outside museum person who internationally just designs museums. And both myself and Shannon from the history museum, the president of the local history museum, worked with him for years to go through kind of with a fine-tooth comb, making sure that everything he presented was as accurate as it could be to the best of our knowledge and that he had the best pictures to kind of depict different times and eras and the creation of that part of Ozark's history, which is mostly right around the turn of the century. We've also been invited to do programming with them since we started this. So our adult programming coordinator, Charlie, for a couple of years now, has helped organize the Stargazing and Smores event that library patrons are invited to attend. So this is just a little bit about the most recent event, but for those of you who weren't aware of that partnership, you know, if anyone's seen my title Development, that's of course fundraising, but the strategic partnerships part of my title, I think there's really no better example than this particular partnership. So this is a place where we came in to provide what libraries do best, which is information, images that we have in our collection. We found ways to make it, you know, profitable for the library. We found ways to do programming that's joint programming with other institutions that care about history and care about local culture. And we really look forward to a long-term partnership with them, not just on the annual, hopefully, Riverside Inn Howard Garrison event, but really on whatever they want to do in the local community. So any questions?
Are we rotating out pictures or how is that working?
Here's the second chapter of the pictures, which is part of why we asked for a professional appraisal is because we had a few concerns about them having these original paintings, which we now know are worth thousands of dollars each in the part of their facility that has ketchup, for example. Right. And drinks. And so we were, and floods from time to time. So we were a little concerned about that, but they reassured us. And now we have the appraisals. If we need to, we will reimburse you for the value of the paintings. But after they were open for a couple months, I think they began to see our concerns play out. As far as we know, there were no incidences, but they came back to us and asked if they could be authorized to make a high-quality gey clay, which took over a year because it's really high quality. I mean, it looks, they even recreated, each of them had an original frame from Howard, and they like had someone recreate the frame. So it looks exactly like our paintings. But we now actually have the originals, and they did agree to keep the same kind of licensing agreement. So we do have an actual written agreement for those paintings that they can't just start selling T-shirts or anything like that. They can, but they have to talk to us first, and we would of course ask for a cut of that. So we're really happy with that partnership. And we, those are the four paintings that are in the best shape for us. So those are probably the only ones we'll loan. The Christian County History Museum has a number, about a dozen others, that are not quite as highly sought after, but I think over time they could change those out. And then we're not the only two institutions. The Engels family, who owned Riverside Inn after Howard, didn't own it anymore. They gave some, they had a few Howard paintings as well that they gave. So there's, and a few other people in town had some that they had donated. And we're still on the hunt for some of Howard's more well-known paintings around town that would be great for that facility. So if any of you have connections to people who own Howard Garrison paintings, I would love to talk to you about what you've got and whether you'd be willing to let the mill borrow it. Because it's a, it's a really great, if you have not been, and the museum has only been open for about a year now, and then it was closed for the flood. But I think they settled on $5 a ticket or $3 for seniors and children under the age of something, and then free for children of a certain age, something like that. So it's pretty cheap while you're waiting for your table. It's a quick kind of walkthrough. But they did actually take all the gears of the working mill and made kind of a working mill demonstration. You get to kind of walk through and see the history tour. I am featured in the intro video, talking a little bit about local history. And in this, this window thing, you'll see library staff talking about a few of these creators. So it's really been a fantastic promotional opportunity for the library. And we've really enjoyed working with Megan. I've rarely run into someone who is as much of a history nerd as some of us who are actual history nerds here. But she loved, loved, loves history and did not want to leave the Anderson History Room when she came to visit. It is her passion and her interest. And, you know, she's pretty high-profile, but I would occasionally get a late-night text when we would unearth something on the back of a napkin or something she didn't know. And she would just get really personally excited about really trying to lace real details and authenticity into this project. Thank you. Thank you, Tori.
Thanks so much, Tori. I'm sorry. All right. Okay, no old business, so moving on to new business. The 2024 important dates. So there's two separate things for you all to go through tonight. The first is the holidays. We just do this annually. There are no changes from last year other than the actual dates that some of the holidays fall on. So if you don't, if you have any questions, let me know. I think it's closed all the same days as we were the last couple of years. Anyone have any questions about dates? Is there a motion to approve the important date holidays closures for the library for 2024? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Diana?
No, second was Janice.
Who was, who moved?
Echo. Echo.
All right. Roll call votes. Trustee Alexander?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Okay. All right. And then the next is the meetings for the Board of Trustees. So this is usually the fourth Tuesday. There's a couple that I wanted to check on. So, no, I'm going to have to pull up my calendar again. November, the November meeting. I think I'm suggesting put it a week early so it's not the week of Thanksgiving.
Right.
I felt like in the past, there's been some conflicts with that. This year, it's nice because it falls the week after Thanksgiving. So this will be the week before, which is still four weeks apart from the October meeting because there's five Tuesdays in October. And then the December meeting, also a week earlier than usual to avoid the Christmas holidays.
You mean you don't want to have a board meeting on Christmas Eve?
No, I don't. I mean, do you? Okay. They're closed, so that would be interesting. We just approved for easy close that day, but you must come in for a board meeting. Yes, yes. I think otherwise, they're all... So as long as the fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM still works for you all, we have the January one in Ozark and then the rest here in Nixa. And a year, two years ago, we talked about having rotation to where we have one each at least once at each branch a year, but our smart and clever locations are just not large enough to accommodate everyone. So we're kind of focusing on Nixa and Ozark. And so we'll do Ozark once and then Nixa the rest of the time unless some kind of conflict arises like we've got next month. So...
What do we do if there's bad weather?
So that's, that happened in January. So we canceled it and rescheduled it for a week later so that there was still plenty notice. Of course, we had the same weather a week later and canceled it again. So it took a couple of weeks to do it, but we usually, I usually would like work with the board president to kind of, like if the library's closed, then we would just not have the board meeting. If it's in it, if the, then we can kind of decide, depending upon the timing of when weather's coming in and stuff. We tend to err on the side of public safety. So we can typically reschedule. And if there's, you know, we try to give plenty of notice, public notice, but if there's something, emergency that we need to get done, we can kind of adjust the timing of rescheduling for that.
Is there anything where we, do we have any kind of policy where like, say, if, like if the meeting's going to be in Nixa, where we can say if Nixa schools are closed, then we're not having the meeting? Do we have any policy like that?
That's kind of how we base off the library closing off of. Although typically, they all close, they all make this decision kind of together. So it's typically all or nothing when it comes to schools.
Okay. What was that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Are there any other questions about the meeting dates?
Nope.
Is there a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' meeting date for 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Trustee Alexander?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
All right. All those dates are taken care of. Renee, I'll let you take over for the memorandum of understanding with Missouri State Highway Patrol. Okay. So this is an interesting opportunity for the library and the State Highway Patrol. So currently, the State Highway Patrol does driver exam testing out of the city of Nixa building. But because of Nixa's some upcoming renovations, they're not going to be able to use that space anymore. So they've been looking for an alternative location, and there haven't been many options available. So a connection was made, and we started talking several weeks ago about the possibility of using some of our additional space in the annex side. So what we're looking at is they do it Mondays and Fridays. They do testing here in Nixa. We have two rooms in the back corner over here that have a back door access. So we're looking at kind of partitioning off those, that hallway where those two rooms are and then having the public who would be coming for exams go into that back entrance. So we've walked through with them and talked about the logistics of that. It works for them. We think it will work well for us. So this is the draft of the agreement. There will be, and I did send this to our attorney to look over, and he has no issues with it. It's one of those things that's not necessarily something that the board needs to approve, but I wanted you all to be aware of it and give you an opportunity to ask any questions or express any concerns since it's a new thing for us. And it is, the initial agreement will be through July 1st of next year to finish out the fiscal year. And then we would renew it from that point on for 12-month periods from there. So, and there's language for termination if something, you know, happens and it's not working for them or et cetera. There is rent included, that we use kind of a standard square footage rent per month for them to help with like utilities and any. We'll have a few expenses that come into place with utilities and cleaning and things like that, but that will cover all of that.
I'm going to ask a basic question. What about restroom facility access? Has that also been considered?
Yes, we did talk about that. It's a great question. So for the public who are there, they will, they can use the library public restaurants, so they will need to leave out the back door the way they came in and come around and go to the front. So...
So they're not going through the executive directors or the, all the offices? They're not going to go through that space?
Right. And that was kind of our biggest like logistical concern is because we don't have anybody sort of monitoring that area. We've got HR and finance and, you know, all of that stuff back in there. So we think it'll work well with putting a partition up and then...
Is that where Nixa offices close to?
I think you can put Nick in charge. So, and they'll have, it's actually two rooms. So I think they're looking at using, doing a testing in one of the rooms and having people wait because there's often people waiting either on the people testing or waiting to test. So we can make that a comfortable area with lots of library information for people and encouragement to get library cards and things like that. Unless something has changed, I do believe this is the only option at this point. Unless something has changed, I do believe this is the only option at this point. So, if we are able to make this work, then Nixa won't have testing options. So, we're excited about being able to keep that for the community.
Sounds good.
And I appreciate the three of you coming tonight. I didn't know if you would be needed, but I wanted to, in case they asked some questions, I didn't want to be stumped.
Thank you guys.
We appreciate your help, Renee. Just as, just as she said, we've explored all options in the area that we're aware of for space and availability. And our fallback, if it fell through, was to offer more additional testing in Ozark. And honestly, for the, there's Director's Attorney Chief Miller and Director's Attorney Supervisor, Gary Acquae, who he.
Could you guys stand up?
Running the crew here at Nixa. But our fallback, this one is busiest station is here in Nixa. We're really wanting to still provide that service here for, for western Christian County, so.
Well, and just to bounce off Lieutenant here, Nixa's actually our busiest station in Trudy, in an 18-county area.
Wow.
They outperform Springfield, they outperform any other location in Trudy. And that's an 18-county area down here in southwest Missouri. So, when we got word from City Hall that we were tearing down the utilities, building and utilities was moving inward, we were like, oh, that's not good. You know, we used to be over at the fire station. Well, we outworked that in no time. City Hall came and said, hey, come see us, you know, we're getting rid of court, court's not gonna be held, you guys can have access to that room. And we've had a great relationship there. And actually, they're the ones that kind of guided us to you all. They're like, go see the library. They just got that new annex and they own that whole building. So, then, was it Aaron that we talked to?
Probably.
Yeah, so we came and just did with Aaron, I believe was his name that day. And I mean, just wonderful, you know? And it, I told Gary that day, I said, man, that feels right from the beginning. So, we're glad that we're getting to stay in the Nixa area because there is a huge need, there's a huge need for Christian County to be in Ozark and Nixa.
Agreed.
There is. You know, this county's just exploding population-wise. I mean, they come from everywhere. They come from Reed Spring, they come from Branson, they come from Springfield. Anything south of Sunshine Street in Springfield comes to Nixa. They just do. And that's why we outwork Springfield down here. It's, it's really amazing. I think you guys will see a lot of traffic come through the library. And I love the idea of you putting books back there, literature, library card applications, whatever. I think it's fantastic. I do. And I think it's beneficial for both of us.
Do you think there is enough parking to facilitate? I mean, my feeling is the parking lot's usually about a third to maybe half full at maximum. And I was thinking on the back row and the side, there should be enough. It will meet your needs?
I, I think it will. We, we talked long and hard about that.
Okay.
You know, they have to walk a little ways. I hate that. You know, I, I know this room is used sometimes. There are events that, that take place in here. You know, we'll just have to play it by ear. I think there'll be plenty. I do.
And it's something ongoing process?
Right. And it'll be a long process for us too, just to kind of figure out, okay, what's gonna work, what isn't gonna work, you know? I was glad to hear you talk about the hallway because that was a concern of ours also, you know, especially when you heard the finance office and this people. We don't need any part of that. We don't need those issues to come up, concerns with us.
As supervisor of the crew, I'll guarantee that there'll be no people walking through your administrative offices. We will be blocking that off with petition. And I can guarantee you that there will be no one walking through there.
I believe you. I went across you.
We're excited. We're excited for the opportunity and I think you'll see a lot. I think the possibility exists that you'll see some traffic through the library that maybe you didn't have. And maybe people didn't even know this existed. I mean, I was blown away when I walked in over there the other day. I was like, wow, this is huge. This is enormous.
How much, how much, how much traffic do you get like?
A lot.
For a month long, can you give me a number?
So, there's days that we'll see 150 people.
Oh, my goodness.
With.
What are the hours?
That's written and.
Written and skills test.
And what are the hours for that?
7:45 to 4 o'clock.
Wow.
And we stay open during lunch break. So, we're hopping. I mean, there's days where they'll give 75 skills tests in a day.
My goodness.
Right here in Nixa.
How many people do you have waiting at a time with numbers like that?
I do not keep people waiting.
Okay.
I, I keep them rolling and going. I got a crew of three other examiners plus a part-time examiner that comes in on Fridays sometimes. So, we do not, it's my goal to not hold no one up more than 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay, wow.
Parents, parents waiting.
I would say an average, maybe 10, maybe 10. Now, busy days and school out days, you may take, in the January, like, wow, I guess I need.
And there are situations, schools out, spring break, Christmas break, yes, our numbers flow through the road right here.
And at least we've got, you know, some overflow waiting area if they don't want to wait in that section, they can come over to the library, so.
Okay, sounds wonderful.
We're excited. We really are. We really appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and, and continue to serve the residents of Christian County, so.
Thank you for what you do.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee, for working it out. That's pretty cool.
We will make it happen.
Excellent.
Okay, we are going to move into public comments. As for the board's updated public comment policy, as a general rule, the board will not respond to public comments at the time they are made. The board may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during normal business hours. I'm also going to add, I know that a lot of what people are saying affects us each individually in different ways. So, I've also, and we as a board have noticed that emotions have been heightened lately in these meetings. So, during public comment, there will be no clapping, there will be no responding, there will be no vocal anything from the audience, audience, as this is a board meeting and not a community meeting. So, if there is, I will adjourn the meeting immediately. So, I'm just letting you guys know that now. I'm trying to keep it so that it flows, so that everyone can get out of here safely, comfortably, and you're free to applaud somebody after the meeting is over and go up and tell them that you agreed with what they said. But during the meeting, there will be no vocalization from.
Has there been a vote on that?
There doesn't have to be a vote on that.
So, yours, this is from you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, all that to say, we have 10 people, again, 30 minutes, three minutes a person. You can do the math as easily as I can. Last meeting, you guys were very respectful of moving along and getting 11 people through. So, we were, you know, let's try to do that again so that nobody has to forego their time. If you would like to forego your time because someone has said what you've wanted to say already, out of consideration for everybody in the room, then you're welcome to do that. And just like last time, I'm gonna be moving quickly through these. So, David Rice, you're up first.
Ready?
Yeah, oh, and sorry, one more thing before you start. The time, we switched the room around so that you can see your time, so hopefully that helps as you're speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. My name is David Rice. I will read explicit material from the library collection. Be advised, it is inappropriate for children. Please consider what is best for your own child. That said, let's have the courage to face the devil together so we can ask God if he will hold us accountable for letting children have access to these books. Jack of Hearts and Other Parts by Nellie Rosen, those are collection one copy, recounting the statutory rape between a 13-year-old freshman and an 18-year-old senior with alcohol used to get 13-year-old drunk portrayed as sex advice in the book. Dear, his anaconda want, my first time getting in the butt was kind of weird. I was a freshman and it was winter break right before everyone left for vacation. A big holiday blowout party. There was a senior from another school and we were drinking and flirting and eventually we took off together. His parents were home and my mom was home, so he got us a room at a hotel nearby, ordered enough champagne to be fancy. Anyway, so the senior, I'm not naming names, and I are having fun kissing and sucking and sixty-ninety and what have you. And then he says to me, I wanna fuck that pretty little ass of yours. And I was like, I don't know, I've never done that before. And he smirked and said, sure, right. And I said, no, really. Well, I paid for the hotel room, he said, so let's use it. I'll take it easy on you. But it was pretty clear he didn't believe I was an anal virgin. So, he bends me over the bed and drizzles some lube on my ass. I made him wear a condom, of course, and he starts pushing it in. And wow, that hurts. I tell him to stop, it hurts, and he says he'll go slower. I say, okay, because he's already in, and I'm thinking, okay, so this is something I have to learn how to do, right? So, he slows down and pushes it and eventually it starts to feel good, like really good. He's hitting the right spot, nerve endings are all aglow. Eventually, he finishes and pulls out and condom, of course, is covered in shit. Gets mad at me like it's my fault. Sarah J. Maas, Court of Thorns, Retelling Beauty and the Beast, 19-Year-Old Heroin, that was our one copy. Other books and series are at Nixa and Ozark. Prisoner Being Raped by a Captor. The Claw Retracted and His Kisses Deepened as His Fingers Slid Between My Legs. Coaxing and Teasing. I ground against his hands yielding completely to the writhing wildness that roared alive inside me. And you breathe this name into my skin. He paused again, his fingers retracted, but I grabbed him, pulling him further on top of me. I wanted him now, I wanted the barriers of her clothing to vanish. I wanted to taste the sweat, wanted to become full of them. Don't stop, I gasped out. Aye, he said thickly, resting his brow between my breasts as he shuddered. If we're going, I won't be able to stop at all. I sat up and he watched me, hardly breathing, but I kept his, my eyes on his, my own breathing becoming unsteady as I raised my nightgown over my head and tossed it to the floor. Utterly naked before him, I watched his gaze travel my bare breasts, peeked against the chill night to my abdomen to between my thighs. A rabidous, unyielding sort of hunger passed over his face.
David Lee?
I'd like to thank the board for letting us get some habits. I'm of an age where the glasses are problematic, I'm not sure. A few months ago, I never dreamt I would be here addressing the library board, but recently, some friends suggested that I go to a board meeting to hear what was going on. I attended two or three and was kind of shocked at what I heard. And this is more the tenor, the tone of what I heard. Libraries were described as sources of basically pornographic works and materials designed to corrupt young people. There were comparisons to Solomon Gomorrah and prayers for the library board were made. When I grew up, libraries were different. We were a wonderful, comfortable place to find a good book. Now, however, it seems that, it appears that extremist groups are portraying libraries as threats to their religious worldview. Books are being banned or removed to places where they might be seen by young eyes theoretically, and librarians are being threatened. I want to remind this board and librarians everywhere that the citizens of this area see their libraries as favorably and voted for their funding several times. I am hoping that the public will see through the extremist rhetoric and will rally and that eventually a more calm and common sense view will prevail. Thank you very much.
Jeanne Coburn?
Jeanne Coburn from Nixa. I want to say first, Tori, excellent presentation. I love all of that that's happening over there. Fabulous, just fabulous. And also, the collaboration with the hiring department, that, the hiring role is wonderful. I think that's wonderful stuff. Anyway, I'm speaking tonight as a parent, a reader, a parent, and an abuser of the Christian County Library because you do so many different things. I wanted to take just a minute to thank the library, especially its staff, for all that it does for me and for the community. Anytime I have questions or needs, need assistance, staff members have always kindly, expertly assisted me. It is evident that they are both knowledgeable and passionate about their work and the work that they are doing with the community. I also want to thank administration and staff for continuing to look at ways to meet the needs of the community and make our library system stronger and more inclusive for everyone. Thank you for allowing me as a parent to make choices for my child. Thank you for allowing me to choose what rating system I want to use with decisions affecting my family. Thank you for using my tax dollars for books and resources that appeal to me and others that want diversity and multiple viewpoints on this world. One last thank you for your work and organizing facilitating the upcoming partnership on the Complete Mouse graphic novel. Bringing in two highly respected college professors to provide free of charge courses on the very important topic of the Holocaust and oppression is just another great example of the benefits that the Christian County Library is providing to this community. Thank you for giving us the opportunities that many of us would not have access to and doing it in a way that all in the community have the ability to participate. Christian County Library is a force for good and one of the few places in the Christian County that we all can come together and create community.
Elizabeth Dudas Buskirk?
Hi, Elizabeth Dudas Buskirk. Most of you know I do not have a degree in public policy. I do not have a degree in library science. I don't have a law degree. So, what I'm about to say just comes from me as a citizen because none of those things matter tonight. I'm an American citizen, a resident of Christian County, a parent, and an educator. And with that, I need to say thank you as well for the variety and diversity in the programs that you all have been offering and supporting since I moved to Nixa in 2014. To get to the meat of the matter tonight for me, I want to first address the rule that was agreed upon at the last board meeting. Again, I'm not asking for any change or proposing anything, but there is something I want us all to talk about because the idea to post everything to the CCL website might actually be a little bit problematic and I just kind of want to draw our attention to that. First, any image that's in, that's provided is out of context. When it's out of context, that means that it may or may not, I'm not a lawyer, pass the Miller standard. And if it, it won't pass the Miller standard if there isn't literary value, which means taking it out of context may cause that to happen. The second thing I want to say about it is that consistency in rules, even when they're in response to the public requests, is incredibly important. The reason why it's important is because it gets to the next thing, which is trust in our public institutions. Today, I watched Cassidy Hutchinson talk about the fact that she chose to risk her life literally to testify in front of Congress because she believes that the only way a democracy can survive is if we have trust in our public institutions. So, everyone being represented in the library, from Kirk Cameron's Brave books to All Boys Aren't Blue and Toni Morrison, to graphic novels, is the way that we build that trust. Minimizing conflicts of interest such as talking about rejecting or restricting associations with established organizations such as the ALA and making sure that we don't conflict with those things, not because we want to fall into the fallacy of tradition and just because we always have, we always should, but instead because we need to uphold the public trust. In institutions such as the First Amendment, the government, federal, state, local, and our libraries, we are the public and we have trusted you, and I want to thank you for that.
Elena Keen?
I've spoken to you all for several months now, pleading for help to protect children in our community from both sexual and age inappropriate content. Again, you don't just hand anything to a child, shelved in the children's and young adult sections of the library. So, we were told that the book rating system was too difficult and expensive to implement, yet we are seeing other communities across our country find solutions that work for all taxpaying citizens. And it adds insult to injury that three of the members of this board refuse to admit that even some of the most overtly sexual material that's been shown to you is age inappropriate for minors. Echo and Diana, though, I appreciate your willingness to listen, and I'm hopeful that your presence on this board will stir a desire in the other board members to find solutions. I've brought some photos to show you that I hope will help you to see the struggle that parents are facing in protecting our children's innocence. And these handouts are just a few examples of how concerned taxpayers have found age inappropriate books placed around the library as well as listings from the library's online catalog. These displays and sections of books may seem benign until you open these books and realize that your own child could have picked it up unknowingly. For example, in the first book, All Boys Aren't Blue and This Book is Gay are both pictured on display directly in front of the Nixa Children's Section in one photo. Books that contain extremely graphic sexual content. I cannot bring myself to show you or read anything from those books, but I do want to share a few examples from books that are age-targeted to very small children in our library scattered throughout the entire children's section. Starting in the board book section of our libraries, books intended for babies and toddlers, you'll find Love Makes a Family, The Pronoun Book, Bodies Are Cool, et cetera. There are more, but a quick search on book looks showed me that these are all books promoting gender confusion language and normalization of shirtless adults with scars from gender reassignment surgeries, something I don't want my kids to see. The Bare Naked Book contains nude photos that are absolutely inappropriate for children. It's not only, it doesn't only show nude photos, but also scars from, again, gender reassignment surgeries. This book is marketed to preschool and kindergarten children. Is this age appropriate for a four to six-year-old? I don't think so. UBU, The Kid's Guide to Gender, Sexuality, and Family, again, shows nudity and promotes hormone replacement therapy and surgery to change genders. This target age for this book is seven to 11 years old. On page 26, it says, people transition by going to the doctor for special medicine called hormone treatment and sometimes also for surgery. Later in the book, the author educates the child about sexuality, again, age inappropriate. There are too many books just like these for me to address in three minutes. I was overwhelmed by what I found when I started looking. If these books are going to remain in our library, we need solutions. Some parents might want their children to read these books. I'm not saying they won't, but I have serious objections and so do many other taxpayers in our county. Children are created in God's image and their innocence is worth protecting.
Mayor Hernandez DeCaro?
Good evening. I'm here to discuss material I have found in the Christian County Library that gives me great concern. The first book is. that gives me great concern. The first book is Flamer, a book about a teenage boy scout's struggle with homosexuality. There are many scenes in the book where penis sizes are discussed, where watching pornography is glorified, and even a scene where the boys gather around in a tent, masturbate, ejaculate into the bottle, and the last person to ejaculate into the bottle drinks the ejaculate. This book is presently shelved in the Nixa Young Adult Graphic Novel section. There's another book titled Blankets. This graphic novel details the life of a young man raised in a strict religious home and his struggles with temptation. This book has pictures of sexual activities, has scenes of a child being molested, and plenty of other graphic illustrations. This book is in the clever graphic novel section. Book reports for these books are included within your package, along with text and the troubling images. I had no idea that these books were in the library until a couple of months ago. Currently, there are hundreds of books in our libraries that are accessible to children that are age-inappropriate. When I bring these and other books to the attention of Christian County parents, the immediate reaction is shock and horror. Parents in our community are not aware that these books about anal, oral, sexual intercourse, books with direct and indirect references to gender ideologies, incest, and molestation, suicidal ideation, and other content that is age-inappropriate for minors are located throughout sections of the children's and young adult sections of the library. With that said, can the library honestly say that there is informed consent when parents sign their children up for a youth all-access library card? Are library patrons, especially parents, provided with disclaimers notifying them of the various age-inappropriate themes accessible to minors? I wasn't provided with any warnings of the presence of the high number of explicit material accessible to minors when I applied for my nine-year-old to get her own library card. This is a violation of my parental rights. The Christian County Library is not providing the unsuspecting library patron with enough information to make an informed decision when getting a library card for their minors and when considering materials at our library. There are many books in our libraries that need to be placed out of the reach of children and placed into their own section of the library with a warning about the explicit content they contain. The library's certification requirement for the protection of minors allows for that to happen. I have included that as well in your packet for reference. Many of us here today have been attending library board meetings for months and have taken a solutions-based approach to the presence of age-inappropriate content in the libraries that is accessible to minors with the all-access library card. An argument I hear by opponents to age-inappropriate designations is that parents should always be with their children and monitor what they check out. Well, this idea discriminates against many in this community, especially immigrants and single-parent households. I am the daughter of immigrants, and English is my second language. My English language proficiency surpassed my parents by the time I was in the third grade.
Thank you. Lucas Underwood?
Members of the board, my name is Lucas Underwood, and I have come to you today to say that I strongly oppose any calls for censorship in our library's catalogs. The demands to hide the content in the name of protecting children from being exposed to explicit material are mostly baseless and come from a very vocal, misinformed minority. And what we're facing is a threat to our intellectual freedoms that has regrettably been seen before and must be once again resisted. As a public institution, our libraries have a duty to serve those of all ages, races, gender identities, and sexual orientations. The act of removing books which cover topics on underrepresented groups would be a clear violation of anti-discrimination policies and would be a direct attack on what libraries are. They are gateways to knowledge, diversity of thought, and the bedrock for the educational growth of all. And in this building lies the combined experiences, ideas, journeys, tragedies, and triumphs of thousands. Many who came before us, who came after us, and many who never existed, but nevertheless, we learn from them all the same. To erase these voices stifles our ability to learn, grow, and change from what they had to say. We would trade our full potential as individuals and as a society for the illusion of safety. Our libraries contain a myriad of ideas. Yes, even though some feel are dangerous, many disagree. However, it is not the job of librarians to decide what is morally or ideologically correct for users to consume. It is the responsibility of users to decide for themselves, and for the parents to set the boundaries for their children. Many of us do not need these safety rails and are perfectly capable of perusing and selecting our material independently. It is my belief that in a democratic society, that the most dangerous thing a population can do is become ignorant and fearful. Censorship is the first step towards this, and it's a slippery slope to giving power to a small group in exchange for perceived safety, which will end in catastrophe. And I believe we must stand united and relentlessly resist any effort to silence the voices of the marginalized, compressed peoples lest we allow ourselves to fall into stagnation, fear, hatred, and eventual downfall. Thank you for your time.
Teresa Carson?
Corson. Hello, board. I want to spend my time tonight bringing your attention to Jay Ashcroft's Rule, the library certification requirement for the protection of minors, and how you were in violation of Part 1, Section B. That section states, "No funds received shall be used to purchase or acquire material that constitutes child pornography, is pornographic for minors, or is obscene," as those terms are defined in Section 573.010 of Missouri State Law. If you look at my simple graphic here, you'll notice that the biggest issue would be child pornography, indicated in red. Very few of your materials hit this mark. Then you have pornographic for minors, indicated in orange. Many have stated that in previous board meetings that the Christian County Library system is in violation of this mark, and rightfully so. But below it, on the tone poll, is obscene, which is in yellow. And if you look at the definition of obscene as defined by state law, it's a low bar and threshold. Missouri Statute 573.010 defines it as "any material or performance taken as obscene, applying contemporary community standards. Its predominant appeal is to preient interest in sex, and the average person applying contemporary community standards would find the material depicts or describes sexual conduct in a patently offensive way, and a reasonable person would find the material lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value." Really, child pornography and pornographic for minors don't really matter when the bar is set low at obscene. To be clear, you have many books and materials that hit that mark. Speaking of purchasing or acquiring materials, my daughter recently asked to read a book entitled Fourth Wing by Rebecca Yaros. Christian County Library recently purchased four copies of this book. So I looked it up on Amazon to see what the review said. Astonishingly, many people talked about the amount of sex contained in this book. One reviewer said that about 55% to 90% of the book, the primary driver of the story is lust with grinding body parts. Another said the book contained gratuitous sex scenes. Another reviewer said that the sex is nothing but porn and a cheap hook in place of real storytelling. Still, another describes the book as "a heavy emphasis on sexual obsession of two people," as it devolved into how firm his privates were and how great the sex was. And still another, "The sex scenes were long. Once they started having sex, they just didn't stop. Even without reading the excerpts, this is obscene, and books like this need to be rated." Why are libraries sexualizing our children? Don't make me make the argument that Hollywood, video game creators, app stores, and a myriad of other industries are better at protecting our children from inappropriate content and products that the industry that gallantly loves to hide behind the all-cure brush.
Jennifer Ruth, please stop.
I believe we can all agree on the influence books can have on our perception of the world. Can we then turn around and assume that only the positive ones leave a lasting impact, especially on kids? Public libraries should be reflective of the moral standards of the community. Avoid a basic morality, freedom invites depravity. Does this library set the bar according to community standards? Lately, it seems there isn't one at all. It also appears that this board is concerned about upsetting entities beyond the local taxpayers of Christian County who fund this library. Perhaps you fear that implementing ratings of parameters puts you out there too far in an unfamiliar direction to face repercussions. I assure you, the notion of parental guidance has traditionally been a matter of common sense. Only recently has it become a political hot potato. Suddenly, people don't know how to handle it because there's so much rhetoric surrounding it. Let's look at who has implemented protective ratings in movies, music, and video games from a political perspective. It was President of the Motion Picture Association of America, Jack Valentin, who was a close advisor to Presidents Kennedy and Johnson, who launched movie ratings in the 60s. Self-enforced ratings by Hollywood were a measure to actually stop censorship. In music, it was none other than Al Gore's wife, Tipper Gore, who led the charge after hearing her 11-year-old daughter sing lyrics that mentioned masturbation. When video games became overrun with graphic violence and sexual content, Democratic Congressman Joe Lieberman fought to put age-appropriate parameters in place. To avoid government regulation, the industry created the Entertainment Software Ratings Board to self-regulate. In each case, informing parents and protecting children was the priority. You see, this shouldn't be about conservative or liberal or left or right. This is about helping parents discern good from bad. How can you help parents with this task? Is it fair to shirk all the burden onto us? This has to begin from the bottom up. What can you do to get past the political rhetoric and get back to defending innocence? Please support parents so that we can continue supporting you. Thank you, and God bless.
Jamie Rayback?
Before I'll start, I actually have three Howard garrisons myself, so let's chit-chat. Yeah, three originals. I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize right off the bat now if I stumble and stumble into a few huzz, okay? But in my office, I'm the state representative for District 140, which is northern eastern Christian County. My job, my service that I do is to listen to the constituency and weigh out the best options and do what the constituency really needs and desires. I really think that is what the board should be doing as well. I get calls, sometimes on a daily basis, multiples in a week, of issues. Probably the second most brought-up issue is library. I get them quite a bit. I encourage them to get involved. I encourage them to show up at the board meetings and to make their voices heard. And I encourage them to come visit as well. Don't know if they've done that or not, but that's what I do. It's kind of the rule of thumb that not all things are permissible or doable, but not all things are permissible. You shouldn't do everything just because you can. We have a lot of things in our library that probably should not be here. In fact, they shouldn't, in my opinion. But listening to the constituency, I hear of the need to reevaluate what we have on our shelves. No one has said that, except for people who want to push that, "All use or somebody use rhetoric." No one is saying burn books. That's something that's been going around a lot lately. What they're saying is, "Let's be stewards of our children." And there are books that are on the shelves that not everybody wants. They're not saying ban. They're not saying make them outlawed. If somebody, if a parent wants to have a book to show their child, they can go to Amazon. They can go to Barnes &amp; Noble. But what are we paying for with our tax dollars? Our tax dollars should be paying for the items and the materials that the population as a whole desire. And we have to be a good steward of how we spend our dollars. And our dollars could be better spent by making sure that we are buying products and books that will meet the masses, not a niche. The highest majority of the people that contact my office are on the conservative side. They want to make sure that the products that their children come in and look at here on our shelves are the right products. And that is why I sent them here to be voiced here, okay? And earlier I heard someone say, "That's why we have a democracy. We can make those choices." We have a republic. A republic is stronger than democracy. And I think we need to utilize our republic and make our process right. And I desire the board to rethink how they are making their decisions and listen to the citizenship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.